Shall we go? First of all, I'd like to officially welcome councillor Stuart David to our gathering. Welcome Stuart. And also tonight, hopefully the link's been successful for them, we've got some special guests. We've got Harvey Barrett, Shay Ferran, Damian Richards, Richard Quillam and Sean Williams, who are all going to apply to be youth representatives having responded to the recent advert that we put out. I will be making the decision as to who to appoint because we need to appoint two people from the four at our next meeting. So welcome to them. Can I just remind everybody that tonight's meeting is being recorded and will be available on our YouTube channel? And can I also ask that you all switch off your microphones when you're not speaking, which is the protocol that we've kind of worked out is best for us really. Otherwise we get a lot of background noise. All right, okay. Welcome. Apologies for absence.
There with me, chairman, councillor Greenley's just arrived. I have no formal apologies for absence, chairman.
Okay, councillor Baker, using our protocol, we can assume it's a technical problem as he's not let us know. So are we prepared to accept his apologies on that basis? Yeah, thank you. Declarations of interest? Any declarations of interest now, thank you. Mayor's announcements. Well, we're in lockdown, hopefully. Quite soon I will be able to come out of the shadows. I've become a little more stringent with lockdown as just over a week ago, one of my immediate neighbours died of Covid. So it's still out there in the community. Presentations from outside bodies? Gareth?
No, not this time, chairman.
Statements from the public? Anybody want to say anything?
I'll bring all the public up and then they can see if they wish to say something. Do any men of the public wish to say anything? Obviously not, okay.
Okay, thank you. Right. Bring our county councillor up.
I think he's already there, chairman.
Is he? Can't see him, yeah.
He may appear as I...
Right, there he is, yeah.
I'll have to move. There is something very wrong with this tonight, chairman, I apologize.
Yeah, okay.
Should do.
Little glitches.
Right. Should be visible now.
Are you okay councillor Timms?
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Great. Thanks, Mr Mayor. Excuse me. Just to report, since last time we met, the county council has had a meeting and there were three items on the agenda, one of which was the use of plastics. You may remember that they've been looking at single-use plastics and how the county can reduce them. And they're going on to school meals, hopefully, in the fairly near future. But of course, the Covid problems, they've not really been able to get on to that as yet. So the committee that's been set up has been disbanded, but the topic heading has gone into the climate change agenda. And so that will be following up with both the plastics issue and the climate change. Of course, use of plastics is not necessarily going to save the climate because very often the alternatives to plastic can actually produce more carbon than the use of the single-use plastics. And there are all sorts of other... It's a very complex issue which needs really detailed consideration rather than just a knee-jerk reaction to it. So that's why that's taken a while to progress. The climate change agenda, as I said last time, the county council have now adopted a plan to 2030, when the council will become carbon zero. And the other item on the agenda was council tax and local precepts and passing the financial plans for the county council for the next year. And just one other thing I'd like to report on and link it to that plan, and that is the Flangothlin 2020 group. I don't know if you saw it, but we decided that what we'd do is produce a short video, and it's about four or five minutes long, I think. And it just outlines the history of the group. And I did ask the mayor if it would be possible to show it tonight, and he agreed that that would be possible.
We will try. Can I share my screen Gareth?
Let me have a go first, I've got it loaded up here somewhere. He says with all confidence, it does seem to appear now. Is it appeared?
With restrictions on meeting in person, newspapers losing readers and social media often distorting healthy...
We can see the Zoom on the top of it.
...opportunity to share some of the journey that the Flangothlin 2020 working group and its partners have been on over the last four years.
Gareth, it's not working.
...brink of confirming nearly £2 million of infrastructure for our town.
I'll just stop it, I'll start it again, chairman.
...whether we've been successful. I'm Graham Timms, county councillor for Flangothlin and chair of the Flangothlin 2020.
Still not appearing.
I'm here with Melvin Mile, councillor for Flangothlin.
If you stop yours Gareth, I will try mine. Okay?
Hello.
Hello. With restrictions on meeting in person, newspapers losing readers and social media often distorting healthy community discussion. I wanted to take the opportunity to share some of the journey that the Flangothlin 2020 working group and its partners have been on over the last four years. We've got exciting news that we're on the brink of confirming nearly £2 million of infrastructure for our town. We'll find out in the coming two months whether we've been successful. I'm Graham Timms, county councillor for Flangothlin and chair of the Flangothlin 2020. And I'm here with Melvin Mile, also a county councillor for Flangothlin and the town councillor, Austin Shemone, town councillor and Flangothlin mayor, and town councillor Robin Lovelock. And all of us are members of the Flangothlin 2020 working group.
Thanks Graham, and hello everyone. When I became a town councillor, there were a couple of clear messages from residents. The first was that it was very urgent and important to address the longstanding challenges around parking and congestion in the town. And the second was a feeling that Flangothlin had been missing out on opportunities from Dambisher for some time, that we were being sidelined and suddenly going to towns further north, in particular the Rill. And this is an area I felt I could help with. And I was particularly encouraged in 2015 that to see this crowdfunder, where residents came together to draw on the expertise of Ben Hamilton Bailey, who was an expert and came to share his expertise in shared space town centres.
Hi, I'm Mel. A bit of history really now. So following that, we had some town council discussions which in 2017 led us to set up the working group, which became 2020. It comprises two county councillors, Graham and I, two councillors, Robin and Tony Aswaz, who has been replaced by the town mayor Shem at the moment. Thank you Tony for all of your work. And two members of the Chamber of Trade, which unfortunately is now dormant, and they were David Davis and Darren. From the start, we had incredible support and encouragement from the leader of Dambisher County Council, Hugh Evans. We've also had fantastic professional advice and we've drawn on the expertise of officers for various teams: highways, road safety, active travel, economic development, community development, conservation and countryside services. The Welsh Government highways team has been involved from the start of this project, drawing in their regeneration team, road safety, Visit Wales, Cadoo and others as needed. And our senate member, Ken Skates, has also been very supportive. And we've even had a visit from Hannah Blydon, a Welsh government minister. Thank you.
Since its launch, the working group has been determined that resident solutions to the problems in town be listened to and considered. However, we realised we didn't have sufficient expertise in traffic and highways to pull the developed solutions. So Flangothlin Town Council contributed and secured further European, DCC and AOMV funding to conduct the consultation and gather residents' ideas. A thorough consultation was held throughout the process, which was led by our Arcadis consultants and the Flangothlin 2020 working team. Once we gathered your ideas, we worked with the consultants to test them against what was allowed in law. What previous studies from the town have found, learning from other towns facing similar problems, and we continued to listen to more ideas throughout other work going on in town, such as the Carew Flangothlin pop event.
Dambisher County Council have almost completed the final drawings. In the meantime, this is a picture from another town, which broadly illustrates the feel that we're trying to achieve on Castle Street. The paving colours will draw together the craze from Santinry Square and the sandstone of the town hall. Sadly, there won't be enough room for quite as many trees as that, but we're working on getting as many as we can. Separately, we'll publish full details of the proposal to be implemented from October 2021. For the main changes, the project will introduce wider pavements and a narrower carriageway to maximise pavement space and slow traffic, improving safety for pedestrians and cyclists. Secondly, raised crossing points across Castle Street junctions to slow traffic and improve crossing safety, especially for those with disabilities and small children. Next, keeping Market Street to one way, as far as the public conveniences, after the Covid restrictions have finished in the town. And next to last, installing loading bays on Castle Street and Market Street. And finally, marking disabled parking bays on Oak Street and Bridge Street.
So once Arcadis had developed solutions based on your ideas, research and real-time traffic data, further community consultations were held with more opportunities to feed in through traffic surveys and meetings. There were more articles in local papers, Facebook Live question and answer sessions and more social media, all with the aid of refining the ideas proposed.
So one of the key areas of feedback from these consultations was that the proposals didn't go far enough to resolve the issues of the parking problems facing the town, especially in the summer. So we'd identified six groups with parking needs: town centre residents who don't have designated parking spots, pop and shoppers, business owners and workers coming in for their jobs, disabled drivers, visitors by car in their thousands and visitors by bus. So it was not going to be easy keeping everyone happy and discussion on these is ongoing. This hasn't been tried before and I know the reason why now, it's a nightmare. We tested the ideas at a public meeting, also with some focus group discussions with people and businesses which would be affected by the proposals. We took on both some of their suggestions, for example, loading bays on Castle Street. Thank you.
It's all very well having these plans, but where is the funding? And this is something else that the Flangothlin 2020 working group has taken on. We have met with numerous organisations looking for funding opportunities, given many, many presentations to those agencies. And you can see here that the project, when it started off, it was initially Flangothlin 2020, but we decided to up our ambition, although more realistic in the first instance. We've written, drafted grant applications and submitted them with the town council. We've drafted grant applications and submitted them with Dambisher County Council.
The news is that DCC have a project plan in place, a critical path for delivery, as they call it. And we're working hard to keep to it. And so far, it's on track, even though we've had the coronavirus challenges this year.
So we know it's taking a bit longer than we anticipated, well, a lot longer than we anticipated. However, this project may be called Flangothlin 2020, but it's very much a Dambisher project. People say that we never get anything out of Dambisher, that it all goes up to Rill. Well, that will change for us successful in these ground. We'll have a lovely new town centre, safer for you, the residents, safer for the thousands of visitors who come here. And it's an environment where our businesses can thrive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, bye.
Bye. There you go.
Okay, thank you. So that's the history and the journey as it is to today. And I said I was going to link it to the county council funding because at the county council meeting, the budgets for next year were approved. And pleased to be able to say that Flangothlin 2020 is the number one priority of the traffic and parking area. And we've been allocated another £271,000 to go into the kitty. And we're looking forward to hearing the outcome of a number of other grant fundings over the next, well, should be with us by the end of March. And then there's one other grant that we're waiting for during April. And so we're almost at the point that the scheme has got all the funding in place. So we're really pleased to know that, I mean, we talk about a lot, I know, down in South Dambisher, that all the money goes up there. But I think we've shown that the county council is really looking at our area and investing in our area. So that's something that we've been very pleased with and I'm sure the town council will be too. Thank you very much, thank you, that's the end of my...
Anybody any questions, Stuart? Stuart?
He's still eating himself, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions? No. If it's all right with you Graham, perhaps if Stuart has got a question, we perhaps might come back to it if there's a convenient break somewhere, is that okay?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Right, so we'll move on. I'm waiting for Stuart to rejoin us. Minutes of meetings to authorise and sign the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 16th of February. Anybody like to propose that? Thank you councillor Greenley, seconded by councillor Haddie, thank you John. All those, anybody not in favour? That's the way we did it last time, it seemed to work quite well. Thank you. To receive the minutes of the asset management committee. Sorry, there you are Stuart, you're back again. We carried on with the minutes, but Graham has stayed with us to answer any question you might have, okay.
Thank you Chair, very kind of you, the gremlins are around tonight. Just a simple question really. When are consultations going to start taking place with the community? There's a lot to be, a lot had been said in that very nice video, but we would like to know when the consultations are going to take place and how are they going to take place in what form? Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, the consultations went on in 2018. They started early in 2018 and the Arcadis report was first initiated. And when we spoke to Arcadis in planning how they were going to tackle the programme, we said to them that we wanted to have a consultation in the town at the beginning, which took place in about May, I think, or May or June of 2018. Then they went away and tried to build a scheme that fitted with what the people of the town had said. They came back with a plan at the end of the summer and there was a further round of consultations to have a look at their plan and suggest how they don't really fit in.
Could I interrupt please, you're not answering the question councillor. I asked going forward, what consultations are going to take place? We would like to see this plan that's being developed. I'm well aware that the offices are coming forward with a plan. I did speak to the lead member the other day and they're well advanced, his words. So I think we would like to see what is being planned exactly. Because what you're talking about is two years ago and in fact, we are where we are now today. And as you were aware, lots of people are now waking up to realisation that are big changes. So we would like to know how far along are these plans, what exactly is going on? Let's have an update on them please, thank you councillor.
Yeah. What will happen? The last stage of the consultation is a public consultation where the plans are put out and people are open to object in the same way that they are any other plan. What we've been doing all the way through is keeping in touch with people. People have seen the basic plan. I can't say that it's the actual final plan because there were one or two things that have changed as a result of the comments that people have put forward. But the plans, I think, if you look at the plans in the Arcadis report, that's what the town architect has been following in the main to look at the final plans. So it'll be very, very similar to the Arcadis report.
Thank you councillor, you still haven't answered my question. When are you going to come forward to people so they can have a look at these advanced plans please? Thank you.
The final plans, the final plans.
Yeah, well, I think we'd like to see what is actually being planned now because what is the point of officers going along, making plans? And all of a sudden, we get to consultation and people say, hang on a minute, that's what we don't want. I think an interim...
Councillor Davis, can I comment, two comments really? One is, who are the "we" that you're talking about? Because you're a councillor now and we are the "we". And the second thing that, one of the suggestions I might make is that you have a look at the video because the video outlined the consultation that's taken place up to now. And as councillor Timms has said, once the plans are in their final form, there will be a further consultation. How has that not answered the question?
Thank you Chair. When I refer to "we", I'm referring to "we", the people that I represent. I have got a mandate, I stood for election and was duly elected. And I represent people on that mandate. So when I say "we", I am representing people and the "we" is the people I represent. So I don't think there's anything wrong with that at all, thank you Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Palmer? You need to turn your mic on, John. Can't hear you, John.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Just a point of information, councillor Davis wasn't elected, he wasn't opposed and there was no election.
Chair, I think, I want to come back on that if I may please Chair. The official paper that came from the electoral officer is quite clear. I was duly elected, thank you.
Yeah, so if there's no further questions for councillor Timms.
You're muted, I'm afraid councillor Shemone.
Sorry, thank you Graham. If there's no further questions, we'll move on to the committing minutes received on the 8th of December 2020. Anybody like to propose those as... Move. Thank you Mel, councillor Mile, thank you councillor Davis. Prove the minutes of the Chitterslow Committee, held on the 9th of December 2020. Councillor Lovelock and councillor Lube, thank you very much. Thank you. To consider financial matters, over to you.
I was going to share my screen, but last time it threw me out. I don't know if you noticed, I was in a paddock mode, I disappeared into the ether. So I'll read them out if you don't mind, please. I had a bit of an update yesterday, quite a lot more bells than people recently realised at the end of the financial year. Some of the ones I just draw attention to. Can't see them myself here because they're so small. Morgan's Decorators, that's continuing buying paint for the project upstairs, painting the chairs around on the balcony. Plumbing repairs and renewal, we've had, a while back, we had a report from, can't remember the company's name now, part of Samy Energy Agency, on energy efficiency. And part of that was the boiler. Other parts were moving to LED lighting, which by virtue of Covid, that's accelerated quite a bit because we wanted to go to touchless lighting. So whilst we did the switches, we had LEDs installed, so that's mostly covered. The last part was reducing the amount of hot water runs. So we've reduced the number of sinks in the changing rooms, but on some taps which, you know, we call them plunger taps, so that taps aren't left running. And there are also taps that when they do run are more efficient than other taps, there's a word for it in the report. So that's an ongoing for nearly 18 months ago. So that's sort of the end of the initial works there. So that came in a bit higher than we thought because there were some difficulties with the plumbing. So unfortunately, it cost a bit more than expected. Catherine Susanthen, that's now continuing on the upholstery, that's purchase of more foam pads to start reupholstering, which is going to start soon because all the chairs now have been stripped and repainted. Scribd, the accounting software, if you recall, we said we'd pay the setup fee and then the remainder monthly throughout the year, next year. They've indicated they'd prefer to have it upfront. So we have got the money, as we said, we put money aside for the election, which didn't happen. So if you're quite happy, we'll pay everything upfront. That gives us time to budget for it for next year in a bit more sensible fashion as well. Bus shelter cleaning, reminds me of Friday afternoon night BBC Two, there's no G on cleaning on this one. Mr Williams has been very gracious in that he's continued to clean the bus shelters throughout the year. And he puts a little, as a window cleaner, they just must slip it through the door. Obviously, I've not been there, so I did email him to ask. So he's now put a complete run of all the cleaning that's been carrying on since March. So that's nearly a year, so that... So that's nearly a year. So that's just making sure the bus shelters have been cleaned, which has been particularly important this year, of course, because services have been working quite regularly. Just trying to think. Oh, the SLCC. Human Resources authorised two more virtual conferences. One Leadership in Action and the other is the Society of Local Clarks and Monarch Wales Joint Conference. So I've paid those online and the visa payment. And I think the rest are just generally electricity. And we did get a small charge for election costs, which is just a preparation of a lot of the paperwork, but nowhere near what it could have cost us. And that's just short of £150, chairman, so. Notice I slightly jigged things around because you can see there now the ex VAT amount, still £9,000, which is short of £10,000, which needs to come off the next statement. So when you see the balances going forward, you will now see that, you know, we have it the wrong way around possibly to now. That is an indication of what is still owing to be paid. So if members are happy, somebody could propose and second the fourth base payment for this month.
Proposed by councillor Mile, seconded by councillor Keddie. Now, anybody not in favour of that? Give us a shout. Right, thank you.
Financial statement, we're getting close to the end of the financial year. Obviously, it's last month, this month. So as I said, I put things back to where they were at the beginning of the year. If you recall, we did lots of environments to safeguard as much money as we could for the project, which didn't go ahead. So generally, looking at the bottom lines, really, we've got quite a lot of money. £73,400 total expenditure against the original. We now obviously, some of that unspent amounts will now go across to reserves. Those listed under asset management will go to the asset management reserve. The rest will go to a general reserve. So once we've got those divvied across, we should be in a healthier position going forward. And that, I think, this year has taught us that having only one quarter reserves isn't really the best place to be. When you look at the balances, we've had some VAT back now. So our business money account, our deposit account is around about £70,000 now. And our general account is 63, so you can see that will put us in a healthy position going forward. The 63, as I said earlier, will be dropped to about 53 by the end of the financial year. So it's fair to assume that we'd have 112,000 in reserves if we transfer everything across. That's something we'll bring in April or May, position on reserves. So things will be a lot better going forward than they have been for a while. And there's something else I need to report that I reported to the members on Asset Management Committee. Thanks to a colleague, Jenny Barlow, the clerk of Denby Town Council. She's alerted us to the fact that there's a section 44A, we're not quite sure of what, but she wrote section 44A to the non-domestic racing people in County Hall. They have then given us three months, lieu of an NDR, for three months from March lockdown till June, as it were, and for the second one from December till now. So that means we've not paying six months, we're credited with six months of rate, which is now credited to our account next year. So in effect, we won't start paying any business until about September, which again is good news because that will compensate for any losses we encounter through rents or failure to open up as soon as we can upstairs. So, you know, going forward, we'll be in a healthy position. We have for some time, which is encouraging. So that's the financial position of our chairman.
Any questions? Anybody like to propose? We accept that? Thank you, councillor Lube, councillor Keddie, thank you. Independent remuneration annual report?
Yes, that time of year, chairman, where the report is published by the independent remuneration panel. Very much similar to last year. They did manage to get around some town community councils to do some consultation this year. And they did quite a bit as everybody has been online. The groupings have stayed the same, so we still occupy a Group B town community council band and therefore that affects some of the determinations. The determinations really haven't changed all that much and they are listed there. And what I've done is the resolution we had for this financial year. You could either take them en masse and continue with the resolutions that were there from last year or you may want to change some, chairman. But whichever way is, we must go through them one by one if we don't agree and get that minute here, Chair.
Anybody like to propose the recommendation or do you want us to run through it? Councillor Mile? You can't hear you, Mal.
You're muted. Hang on, let me unmute you. I'm locked, George. Proposing or asking a question, Mal?
No, I'm happy to propose. I'll go for the recommendation.
Yeah, anybody like to second that? Councillor Palmer, thank you. Anybody object? Thank you. Planning applications.
Councillor Keddie. Councillor Keddie, chairman.
I think you need to unmute him.
He's muted now. Am I good to go?
Yeah.
Excellent. So the first one, 0920, 25 Bridge Street. That's essentially the same as what we approved with our recommendations about the outside area being looked at because of possible noise being generated from it. But it just seems that the listed building application is gone from it and they've made a few little changes to their plans, but they haven't taken our recommendations into account. And just a couple more documents have come in. The ecology officer wants a light overspill scheme for the protection of bats and to make sure there's a CEM plan implemented, stop polluting the D. The NRW have no concerns and Deweckumry just put a condition in that there's no additional wastewater, sorry, rainwater going in from an extra roof or anything like that going into the wastewater system. So basically, it's what we had before.
Councillor Keddie, sorry to contradict, but they have actually taken on board. Oops, he's lost. Oh, he's gone. They did actually take on board what was said. They've put the gate at the end of the alleyway down the sides. They're not having a balustrade, it's small. So they take on board, which is nice to know, our comments. And the amended plan doesn't no longer show the balustrade and the seating area on that small piece of land. If you remember, we looked out the window in the picture.
Councillor Keddie's absence. Is there any further comments?
He's coming back in, Chair.
Coming back? Oh, there you are, Paul.
Should be back now. Sorry, I missed that.
No, I'm just saying, they did take note of our comments, councillor Keddie. They've got a gate now at the end of that little alleyway and they're not having the balustrade. It's not that obvious.
Oh, okay. My apologies then.
No, 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 it's not. The bottom one is all there. It's just a very subtle change. So they did, for once, nice to know.
Ah, fantastic. That's great.
Anybody got any observations or comments? Anybody like to make a proposal? Do we accept them?
Do you?
Yeah. Anybody object to that? Okay, thank you. 1051.
Right, this is what appears to be just another application for what they've already got planning for, but it isn't in fact. They had planning consent in 2011 for a bungalow and the land was levelled in 2012. Now, this application is for another area of the garden. So they still have plan permission for one dwelling there that hasn't been built. But this one is for another bungalow on another part of the garden. But there's no objections from NRW. The AOND are asking for an external lighting detail on it. Cadu and highways, no objections. So again, as far as I can see, it's not overlooked. I haven't made a site visit. It's not overlooked by anybody up there. So I can't see it affecting anybody.
Anybody, any observations or comments?
Moved, Chair.
Yeah, anybody like to second that? Thank you, councillor Mile. Yeah. Anybody object? Thank you. 0185.
That again, it's not going to affect anyone. Others have done similar all along that road. And so it's well above the A5 looking across the river. So I can't see any grounds to object on that one.
Any objections? Thank you. Do we need to propose and second these, Gareth, or?
You should, but I'll take that as a proposal.
Okay, thank you. 019.
All right, this one. In the application, it states in their covering letter, "It has no other purpose than to be a nice place to sit and look out over the valley." Now, however, the objection comes from next door and they have shown evidence of it being advertised as a summer house or Airbnb accommodation. So it's obviously something they're letting out through Airbnb or whatever, something similar to Airbnb. And they're just looking for retrospective planning on it.
Moved, Chair.
Anybody else? Anybody got any comments? Anybody disagree with us agreeing to it? No. Okay, thank you. 0199.
This again, the conservation officer has no objections to it. It's just changing a window for a flydy window on the side of the building. It doesn't have any impact really on any of the surroundings I can see.
Yeah, any objections? Anyone who'd like to propose it, second it? Thank you, councillor Greenley. Thank you, councillor Haddie. No objections, thank you. 0050.
Yeah, this is a raised decking at the hand. Again, the CPAT have no objection. It looks great on the plan, great to tempt the tourists in. And I think now the road direction's changed. There's not an issue crossing the road because things are coming down there really, really slowly. So I can't see anything to object on on that one.
Anybody like to propose that? No objections. Yeah, thank you, John Haddie. Seconded by councillor Greenley. Thank you.
I think that's it, Chair.
Thank you very much. Certificates of decision. Should we note those?
Yes, please, Chair.
Yeah. Planning correspondence?
None this evening, chairman.
Thank you. Town clerks reports?
Yes, chairman, it's just a summary really of this new major piece of legislation, the Local Government Election Wales Act 2021. And the act has been obviously in passage through the Senate for some time and was finally got Royal Assent on the 20th of January 2021. The three main areas really are the reformal act arrangements for local governments, including extension of franchise to 16 and 17 year olds, which will obviously be tested first of all in the forthcoming assembly or senate elections, sorry. There's a potential for principal councils to change from first past the post to single transferable vote. Doesn't apply for community councils. And there's a confirmation of the change now of the electoral cycle to five years. It was four and it's been extended because of issues that have happened at clashes with other general elections. But now it is a five-year system. Other things about politically non-restricted staff being able to stand as a councillor for their authority and have to resign if they become one, you know, but doesn't again even apply to us. The next large bit of enactment will be an introduction of general power of competence, GPAC. And I'll come on to that a bit further down. And then there's a series of reforms on public participation in local government. Quite a lot of emphasis on participation plans at the principal council level, but not applying to us. And then the other one, which we have discussed over the last few months, are the collaborative working, the establishment of corporate joint committees and then the strategic development plans for those committees, which are really allowing like economic wellbeing, housing to be considered at a regional level. And, you know, I know the example I gave before that councillor Mile remembers, the gentleman said, if you go to South East Wales, you've got something like 16 authorities all producing strategic housing plans. And, you know, it's a very close knit community and all the housing really depends on each other's authority. So it makes sense to have housing at that level, considered at a regional level. Planning, again, would go regional and then your local development plans done by the counties would become very site-specific and not look at the growth targets and those aspects being done regionally. And then the local development plans would be what they call LIGHT, L-I-T-E, to just look at those issues, very much like the candidate sites and identifying sites to fulfil those targets. Coming into force, various things coming to force at different times. The bigger ones are attendance, local authority meetings. In essence, these provisions incorporate the coronavirus regulations into law. In England, there's a bit of a panic going on because the 31st of April is approaching and they have no indication if they can continue virtual meetings or not. In fairness, Welsh government have acted and have incorporated. Further down, I infer it's immediate, but it's not. Things checking on this, it will be obviously at the 1st of May because the current coronavirus reg by that on now. Therefore, from the 1st of May, it'll be almost an assumption that people can connect now after a year of this. So there will be no get out with the apologies for absence. If you can't connect electronically, that will not be an apology going forward. People will have been expected to get together. This also suggests a move to hybrid meetings because when we do get back to a place to face, there is still require for persons not present to at least be able to hear and speak. So that's something we're going to have to address when we do get back into the chamber, some kind of mechanism. Personally, I think hearing or speaking is like talking in a seance because you can't see anybody and you're just asking, is anybody out there? And that obviously a visual presence is better. And therefore it may be that, you know, we would have to find some kind of, I said, hybrid arrangement of some people on the screen and others on the table. That's the discussion as we go forward. Just defines what we are, a community council, and, you know, we are required to do this. Not required to publish meetings, there's still not a requirement to record and publish. Principal councils are, but I think as they've said in the past, it would obviously be useful if we did continue and I think quite a few people are. I think John Palmer's trying to ask something.
Councillor Palmer?
Let me just see if I've got you muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. It's just about the planning, Gareth. Do we need to start sooner or later of options of the ways of doing this?
Well, I have looked at options, as I said. It is linked to the connectivity, obviously, in the town hall, which we need to move on quickly. But the thing is, there's technically no urgency because until we're 100% and go back, we can continue with virtual meetings. So that is the option we've got now. Virtual are acceptable. So, you know, if we can't get fully back in and allow people, you know, if we haven't got the kit in the town hall on the day we're allowed to meet, then it doesn't really matter. We can continue virtually until we can get back in and have a proper system set up. So it's something we're going to have to look at and budget for and come up with a solution, which is acceptable to everybody. As I said, personally, I prefer an audiovisual because it's very difficult, as we know, for councillors even to comment if they're not visible and, you know, if they're asked a question. It's a bit like the old days of video conferencing where they send me down the bottom of the room and people will say, oh, what's Cardiff saying? I think we've come on a bit since then. Participation in meetings.
Councillor Davies.
Hi. Thank you, Chair. Yeah, just a few quick comments. I don't like being told what to do by the Welsh government, but there you go. But there's some stuff I don't like, but there is some good stuff. And I particularly like what Gareth has just been talking about, the get the tackle in and let's go to hybrid meetings sooner rather than later. I did send a letter in a few weeks ago, championing this. And I think it's a good idea. I think we'd all agree with that one. I quite enjoy doing this and what I do particularly enjoy is the fact that our audience has increased tremendously by being able to do what we're doing now. So we do need, as Gareth said, the physical act of being together. But even if we were to do that, also to have the big screen on the wall, have the- um, also to have the big screen on the wall, have the, have the tackle to, to do it. So I, I am fully champion that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the next part of participation, I mean, no real change to us, you know, we already allow participation. Some don't, but it will be a requirement going forward. Um, and again, uh, you know, we must be allow people to attend the reasonable to make representation. So yet again, that means if people, if, if, if the persons aren't in the room, we still have to have the facility to make representations. That's even more move to hybrid meeting. Enforce from twenty twenty, general power of competence. I mean, at present, we would be eligible because we've got two thirds of the membership are elected. Qualified clerk. Unbelievably, and, um, uh, at least two, well, we've got two, it used to be, well, it's three originally, but now it's under one year clear audit. So as of last year, we did. Hopefully we will this year. But unfortunately it'll come in in May and then we'll have a new council. So hopefully the majority will be elected, but you know, we could be in a different position. Maybe we may have several vacancies and end up with co-options and you wouldn't be eligible. Once you've, to, to acquire the power, once you've got those, those sort of ducks in line, you then have to make a resolution at an annual meeting to, uh, resolve to be a, a, a council with the power of competence. And then what that offers is the, um, for the legislation of first resort. At the moment, you have to find legislation that allows you to do things. You know, so you have to trawl through the back of your good councillor guide, shows all the relevant bits of bat houses, uh, and toilets and everything like that. What this will allow is you can do anything that a normal person would do without breaking the law. So for argument's sake, um, a normal person could set up a shop. So we could set up a community shop. And, you know, I know a normal person can't tax somebody, so we wouldn't be able to tax anyone. So that's, you know, it's the first power of first resort as opposed to power of last resort. In the past, we had section one from them, but of course we were limited because we only could do like eight, just up to nine pound times the number of electorates. That meant we could only ever spend about twenty seven thousand pound. With cheapoc, you can spend if you've got the money. You can raise funds, you can, you can take on loans, you can do anything uh, that, that would allow. And it's, you know, it's a big change. Been in England for a while. But it would be a huge school and hopefully we will take that up as soon as we can in the new council. To continue, you just have to renew or obviously got to fulfill the criteria. And then every annual meeting, you read, you know, new resolution to maintain it. If you fall out of eligibility, it doesn't mean you can't do what you've already set up. So if you're running a shop, you could carry on running that shop because it was set up when you had the powers. Doesn't mean when you lose the powers because of some bad audit, you just have to stop. So those things would continue to discurry there. Uh, again, from next year, um, annual reports, well, we already do them. So that's not a great, um, change to us. Um, uh, but some don't. We will get guidance coming, so it may not have to be as big and as volumous as we hope or, or we do. It may be rather simple because some small councils won't have, you know, as much to, to do through. The other biggie coming in next year are council training plans. And we have to set out a formal training plan for staff and members. Um, and we have to, uh, publish that once it's been done. I think, I think it, it has to be started about early next year with it to be published at least by November on our website. And then we need to obviously, um, make a commitment to that by having an appropriate budget to match a training plan. And that has to be reviewed. There's also changes for venues for council meetings. Um, you could, you could hold a meeting anywhere really, and it can be outside the council area as well, which is quite interesting. Some of the smaller things, it's, it's all coming out as we speak. Uh, there's an hour move to, and I know a lot of you will be very pleased with this. It says a note of the meeting must, must be put up in within seven days on the website. Um, that's to say who was present, who was absent, uh, and the decisions. So there's a very, the thing is, it's not too dissimilar to the minutes. So, but, um, I'm not sure whether translation, how we would manage that to get a turnaround in seven days. So the minutes may well be very much if, if we continue with hybrid meetings and we continue the role of recording them and then we continue to post them on the, on the, um, YouTube channel, then the minutes could be very succinct because the preamble to the decisions could be seen online. Um, so, um, we could have just, it was proposed, you know, members considered, proposed, seconded, resolved. And then the translation would probably be within my realms of being able to do it because I can just copy what's in the other documents. But, you know, if, if we're going to, uh, and it may be just a discussion was, you know, a, a discussion, sorry, a presentation was given by North Wales Police, full stop. People want to appear, they can obviously refer to the video. So there's an interesting combination there about how we proceed going forward and then continue to record. Um, hopefully we buy better software because I think it takes me just as long to download the minutes, amend them and upload them as we do. Or, you know, if it's an hour meeting, it seems to have to take an hour to download, an hour to change it, an hour to put it back up. So, but that's something else we need to consider going forward. So the recommendation is just to, uh, to note, um, that, uh, the coronavirus meeting regs are now incorporated into the act and I said of immediate effect, technically now from the first of April. Uh, the move to hybrid meetings, so we need to look at that through the asset management committee. Uh, they have got a working group now or task and finish group to look at the networking in the building. So that's a consideration to get a good network connection into the chamber because even with what we've got now, we lose signal. And, uh, just to note those provisions of the act that come in next year, um, if you're all still with us, because obviously there'll be an election in between. Thank you, Chairman.
Anybody got any, any observations? I mean, so an, an immediate, uh, 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 an immediate advantage of, uh, what Gareth has just been talking about is that as we can meet virtually and we don't have to meet at the town hall, when the borders are all open again, perhaps Stuart will invite us to Portugal and we can have a meeting from there. Yeah.
I can get eight, eight in the cockpit, Chair, but that's.
But yeah, it's okay. Some of us can sit on the decks, Stuart, that'd be fine. Yeah, we'd all be virtual. Comments, councillor Palmer?
Uh, yes, uh, Gareth, the, um, the training plan, would this be the responsibility of the HR committee or would it be a, a group set up specifically to do it?
Uh, there will be guidance. That's all I can say. Uh, with all, with all that, the last paragraph is, so actionists will provide guidance. Um, not sure because we haven't done this, but, um, it, it, you know, it, it probably would be HR because they, they currently look at training provision. What we don't do is a formal training plan for members, but, you know, we will from now on. Yeah.
Captain Love Lock, sorry, councillor Love Lock?
Thanks. Um, some really positive steps there. Thank you for running us through them, Gareth. Um, and I guess just to note, we, um, uh, we have previously had an offer from, uh, one of the residents about support with filming, uh, the town council meetings, uh, from Malachy Malloy. And so, uh, before we invest, uh, or as we invest, uh, in, in this, it might be worth having a discussion with him because I know he's been very keen to support, um, more, more community engagement in, in decision making.
Okay. Right, uh, we have a proposal. Uh, anybody like to second, uh, uh, second, uh, the recommendations? Thank you, councillor Mile. Uh, councillor Caddy, seconded it. Any objections? No, thank you. Correspondents?
Uh, yeah, Chair, my first one was, um, after the last meeting, we had, uh, email from Carl, our neighbourhood duty sport officer. Um, just to advise us that Sergeant Martin Jones is no longer at Langotham and we've been now covered by Sergeant Peter Evans from Dambie. So if members feel it's appropriate, I'll invite him to that meeting if he can make it to introduce himself. And we can see what he might.
Can we also perhaps write, uh, a letter, uh, to Martin Jones thanking him very much for his, his support. He's been very diligent in his, in, in his work and, uh, he's always, uh, he's always, he's attended most meetings, hasn't he? Uh, and has also always addressed many issues that we brought up. So perhaps we could thank him.
Yep, great. Thank you all do that, Chairman. Um, second correspondence, Matthew Jones, public relations, King George, Dambies County Council. Uh, we seem to get a lot of emails now as a way of consultation, either referring us to the Dambisha page, some community conversation as it, I can never remember. Uh, this is one is on active travel. I know the councillor, uh, Tim's mentioned active travel at his presentation last, last month. Um, so I, I'd encourage you just to go on to the active travel page. I think it's, it's linked with that strength. Um, and if you want to make any comments, then I think the easiest is to comment directly onto that page.
Okay, thank you. Anybody like to comment? No.
Okay. Uh, the next one is, I'm from Shan Advocate. Uh, obviously they forwarded me the petition and, um, they'd like, obviously the petition to be recognized or received by the town council. Uh, apologies that, you know, I sent out that late link. It was a bit of confusion. Uh, because it is useful for you to see what the actual petition was saying. Um, but, uh, at the moment, they said if we want to receive the petition, Chairman.
Yeah, received, yeah. All right, Stuart.
Yeah, Chair, could I just say a few words? Um, I, I'd just like to say, um, a petition was set up to call on Dambisha County Council to remove the measures placed in Castle Street, Langotham under a T R O in November twenty twenty to facilitate social distancing and active travel. A copy of this petition in response, and there's a response there as well from Dambisha County Council can be seen on my blog spot. And of course the clerk did send a, a link to everybody. It sends a powerful, uh, message to the county and us, over five hundred and thirty people and counting. Uh, they are verified signatures. I'm asking this council to receive a copy and notice. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you noted. I believe that the member action group are already, um, planning to meet and, and, and discuss it. Yeah.
Mag, mag, our meeting, Chair, yes.
Yeah. Melvin, uh, hang on, could you turn Melvin on, please? Yeah.
I'll try. Oh, sorry.
Graham and I are having a chat with Brian Jones tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock. It's not a mag meeting, it's just a chat.
Okay, thank you. Right, noted.
Yeah, thank you. Just, just, just one of the notes, uh, on councillor Miles's thing. I do have an email off the chief exec who said there is a special meeting of mag being called and she will let us know, uh, what date it is taking place on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Friends of Penguin?
Uh, yes, Chairman, um, they've.
Sorry. Sorry, Melvin, want to speak again?
Sorry, Chairman. You're muted just half, Melvin. I can't unmute you.
You're still muted, Melvin.
Oh, you're, hang on, hang on. You've come back up now. Right, okay. Yeah. Yeah.
Bye now.
Just to respond to councillor Davis, we're having a chat tomorrow. It's not a mag's meeting. Um, and no doubt there will be, uh, a mag's meeting organised. We want to just have one. It's, uh, it'll be done when it's done. Thank you.
Okay. Right, uh, Friends of Penguin?
Yes, Chairman, uh, Friends Penguin have been having virtual meetings, but they'll be using free version of Zoom. Uh, Bob attends and I attend because I'm, uh, um, acting treasurer, I think you would call me in the background. Um, they have potentially need an AGM in May. And, um, it may obviously have to last more than the forty minutes of the free Zoom. And therefore they're formally asking whether they would mind if we were facilitated a meeting using Starleaf. As I said, um, I always get invited, invited anyway. So it wouldn't be a problem for me to set it up and be present. But it's just formally asking whether we'd be able to help them, uh, rather than have to purchase a, you know, uh, a Zoom package. And, uh, obviously if they can meet in reality, face to face, they will. Otherwise, would they, would you mind offering this facility, Chairman?
Councillor Caddy?
Yeah, if, if it doesn't affect, um, our contract with what we've paid for and get us into trouble, then I propose we, we let them go ahead and do it.
Yeah. Yeah. Any objections? Can I just say, Gareth, as, as a fallback position, I've got a, um, a full Zoom package. So, uh, fallback position, I'm quite happy for them to use my Zoom.
Yeah. Just in response to councillor Caddy, we've got no limit on the meetings we hold. We've paid for a year and, uh.
Yeah. So if anything were to happen, uh, um, you weren't able to do a Starleaf, my Zoom is available.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, reports from, yeah. What's the page name?
I've, I've had no formal reports from anybody this month, um.
Anybody met with any significant groups that they represent us on? Now, hopefully one day we'll come out of lockdown and we can, yeah.
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 Chairman, do you want to just remind, uh, sorry, well, perhaps advise members that, uh, we, we, we did discuss the, um, Dambisha, um, Destination Partnership, the AGM, and nobody immediately put their hands up, but I understand councillor Palmer has, and therefore I've let.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yes, we, we, we discussed this in November, yeah. But the name of the group, I cannot remember.
Dambisha Destination Partnership, Chairman.
Destination Partnership, Dambisha Destination Partnership. Uh, we had no volunteers at the time councillor Palmer has, yeah, volunteered. It'll be reviewed in May when we have our annual meeting. Any objections to that? No, thank you. Uh, right, notice of motion.
Councillor Love Lock has a hand up.
Sorry, councillor Love Lock?
Only just to say, that's really brilliant, John. Um, I attended, used to attend those meetings when I was working with the food and drink group. And I think they're really useful for the town. Um, so thank you very much for making the time.
Thank you. All right, any other comments? Right, uh, notion of motion. To consider a notice of motion, standing in the name of councillor Stuart Davis, that's from Luton Town Council, calls on the Welsh Government and Dambisha County Council to implement an environmental weight restriction on Langotham Bridge and the early implement, implement, implementation of the twenty mile an hour speed limit on Castle Street. So the first thing that's the protocol, Stuart, is we need to propose that, uh, we accept the notice, the notice of motion and, and, and talk about it and vote on it or whatever. Uh, anybody like to, uh, propose? Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry.
Councillor Greenley, anybody like to second that, that we consider it? Yeah, councillor Mile. Okay, Stuart, it's over to you. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Um, I'll read it out much as you did at the last meeting, um, quite, it, it's not too long. Um, residents of the town are supportive of this measure and I've been asking the question for many years. Um, the current focus on plans with Langotham has brought this dialogue of an EWR, an, um, uh, environmental weight restriction back to life as an alternative which has not been identified by the twenty twenty group. Um, the Arcadis report devotes some time to discussing issues with HGVs transiting the town. It provides no clear cut conclusion or recommendations about how to manage the issue and reduce HGV traffic transiting, uh, Langotham Castle Street. Historically, historically, there's been little appetite, appetite on the part of DCC and the Welsh Government to challenge the norm citing operational enforcement as the major obstacle. From a structural perspective, in twenty seventeen, a report was presented to the local members by DCC Bridges Engineer, identifying issue, issues to a varying degree with Langotham Town Bridge, uh, the King's Bridge up at Berwyn and the Canal Bridge down towards the Bryn Hau. Subsequently, in twenty eighteen, a weight limit of eighteen tonnes was imposed on King's Bridge, whilst Langotham Railway were requested to cease using the town bridge for movement and handling of heavy rolling stock. Politically, the landscape is changing. In written verbal communications, I raised the possibility of an EWR on the town bridge with Ken Skates on the eighteenth of February this year. In our discussions, he agreed there was an issue that could be investigated locally at county level and at the Welsh Government level. He agreed that we had spoken about these issues in the past. Our discussion was positive. Simon Baines, the MP for Cleer South, has publicly offered his support to the initiative as well. These weight limits prevent large vehicles from using inappropriate road routes and areas to prevent damage to buildings, roads and bridges. Preserve the character, amenity and environment of an area. Reduce and manage congestion on the roads, reduce danger to pedestrians and other, other road users. To save, uh, time and all the rest, I've got a long list of stuff here, but I will not unless people want to ask me questions about it. The viable technology now exists for an EWR to be policed or managed through ANPR, Automatic Number Plate Recognition Technology. There is documented evidence of existing schemes in operation on bridges with E, EWRs in force in several counties in the UK. There's one in Newbridge in Oxfordshire, uh, there's one in, uh, Chobham, uh, Road Bridge in Maidenhead and Windsor. Um, so I, 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 I think the point I'm making is, uh, people have asked for it. Um, it is a good thing. I think it would go well with, uh, the proposed, uh, some of the stuff I've seen for the centre of our town, you know, stop those heavy, you know, the forty four ton vehicles, HGVs traversing Castle Street. Uh, the smoke from their exhaust, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So I think, uh, it's a good idea. I think that a lot of people support me. I brought it forward. And whilst I was doing it, of course, um, there is the twenty mile an hour. speed limit, which is going to come now, I think it's 2023, Chair, to all town centres in Wales. I'm asking for support for an early implementation. Why wait till 2023? Let's do it now. Let's get it done, over and done with. Bringing forward the implementation will also help increasing pedestrian safety and reducing pollution. This, well, I've said it already. Eight areas are planning to trial this measure commencing mid 2021. The areas included in the pilot are St Bride's Major, North West Cardiff, Aberguvenny, Sevenfold Brookley, Kilru Village, St Dogmiles, Flanethly North. Why not make a bold step now and make Langothlun number nine? So I ask for the support of the town council in trying to have an EWR placed on the bridge and the early implementation of the 20 mile an hour limiting Castle Street. Neither of these measures would impact on any plans for the town centre traffic plan and would only be an enhancement. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Lovelock?
Thank you and thank you to councillor Davis for the obvious research that he's done into the issue. It's great to hear that background. So yeah, this is obviously something that has been, was tackled when Arcadis were commissioned for their work. And so it was looked at at that time. The understanding that we were given from discussion as the 2020 working group we were given at the time is that an environmental weight restriction wouldn't be supported by Dambies County Council or the North Wales Trunk Agency because it's considered a strategic crossing. So I think that we can certainly have that conversation again and I think it's worthwhile doing so. So I'd certainly support the motion to do so. They just say that some of the proposals for the 2020 project really came out of that discussion. That the consideration was that while the environmental weight restriction wouldn't be put on the bridge, on the street, there were ways of dissuading people from using the road as a cut through. So there were a number of measures that were incorporated into the 2020 plans to address this issue without going as far as the environmental weight restriction. So the first one was making the area feel as pedestrian friendly as possible. We started obviously with a shared space idea, but there's a moratorium on that. But certainly the wider pavements and the feel of a pedestrian friendly street was, is widely considered dating back to Ben Hamilton Bailey days. That does dissuade heavy goods vehicles from using the space and the narrow carriageways, et cetera. But still keeps it open, as we saw the other day, if there is an issue somewhere, it's still possible to get through. And it's not blocking, it's keeping that option open for emergencies, but day to day, making it feel unfriendly. So that's the route we were advised to take at the time. The two other pieces of, two other actions that haven't really been talked about within the 2020 project but have been on the, on the kind of back burner is that the Holton Roundabout is a Welsh Government pinch point scheme. And so it's going through a long process to get that going. But the idea would be that there would be better signposting at the Holton Roundabout to direct heavy goods vehicles up the correct side of the deal. So going via Ruabon or going via the A5 and to therefore stop them, again discourage them from cutting through. And similarly, the last action was to change the Tom Toms or whatever other technology there is for directing heavy goods vehicles so that they don't use that as a cut through and that's not, doesn't come up as an option for them. Obviously, there will be those drivers who are, you know, it's their longstanding habits and it may take some time to dissuade those. But those were the three aspects that the 2020 considered in light of the kind of conversation, saying that it wouldn't be considered as an option. However, having said all that background, I would be in favour of having that discussion again and certainly in favour of the 20 mile an hour limit, which we're keen on anyway.
Anybody else like to comment, observation? Melvin?
Am I, can you hear me? Yeah, why not? I mean, the situation is, as councillor Davis knows, Jim Hall isn't keen, well, Jim Hall says the bridge is okay, it can take 40 tonnes. The county in general do not like putting restrictions on bridges because of what we saw last Thursday, when there is an emergency, they do need to be used. But I've got absolutely nothing against us having a go, trying, having another go at it. We've tried over the last four years. Let's try a bit, let's try again. Let's go for it.
Yeah, I, yeah, I much the same thoughts as Melvin, I think. I seem to remember considering this as an option in about 2017, when I first joined the council. We looked into that and as has been described, we were told it was something we couldn't do. There seems to be no reason not to have another go if anything has changed. What we need is a proposal though, yeah? So there are, there are two, there are two elements to what Stuart seems to be proposing. One is to bring forward the, to explore the possibility of bringing forward the 20 mile an hour speed limit in Langothlun. And I don't think any of us would have any problem with that either. And the second one is to look, to, well, to explore, I guess, the implementation of environmental weight restriction on Langothlun Bridge. Yeah.
Well, I propose that or second it, depending if Stuart's proposed it.
Yeah, well, can I propose it, please, Chair?
Yeah, go for it.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, all right. Proposed, seconded by councillor Myles. Anybody object? Did you catch the wording of that, Gareth?
Yeah, we will just recommend that the motion is carried, isn't it?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yep, proposed seconded.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you again to all of those people who have attended remotely this evening. I hope you've enjoyed yourselves. Thank you, councillor Davis.
Can I just say, Chair, thank you very much for welcoming me to this council. It's been many years since I've sat here, but I've enjoyed every minute of it and thank you very much. You're welcome.
No problem. If only, if only it wasn't your sitting room that you were sitting in and we were all sitting in the council chamber, eh? All right, look forward to our next meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Enjoy.
Cheerio, good night.
And let's all hope that Easter weekend isn't too stressful once the hordes descend on us. Yeah. Take care. Bye bye.
Bye.